Gentlemen, call this meeting the order of the day. Welcome everybody here for our June the sixth, twenty twenty four, four o'clock meeting for our special meeting. Welcome everybody here. Anybody here in the virtual world, welcome y'all here too. Uh, first item on our agenda today is budget discussion. Tedlock, you want to start off or you want us to start off?
It, it doesn't matter. Um, I did lay on the table, the board had uh, asked for some additional information regarding uh, the salary percentage for the school division. Uh, and I had reached out to Ms. Booth and she provided some additional information for us. Um, and that's on the table for you, along with the cost of the health insurance. Okay. But thanks for getting that to me.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else? Would you want to? Do you have?
But that's the only update that I had from what the board had asked for. So I'm not sure how how you all would like to proceed.
How does the board want to proceed with this today?
Page by page, so.
What was that, Ms. Booth? You want to go page by page? I think that's what I heard you say. Yeah, that's fine. Tedlock? We'll go page by page?
Are we? Which budget are you referring to? Are you referring to the county budget or the school budget or?
Which one you want to do first, Mr. Law?
Let's do the county first.
All right.
We've got the public.
Yeah, public hearing, public hearing tonight. Why don't, why don't we wait?
Okay.
Wait on the county budget to after the public hearing.
That'd be good. We can start with school board.
School board will be the next one. I remember Mr. Tedlock sent us all that information again. Let's see here where you sent your salary increase here. To five percent. I mean, I'm just looking at five percent right now because that's what we, basically what we advertised. Um, school systems already got their one, one point two five figured in.
That's correct.
That would get what, three point, so, ten bucks? Okay. Which would bring that down, what, to four hundred and some thousand? From six hundred to four hundred and some thousand, I think, isn't it?
What, what number are you looking at?
I was looking at, I'm just just taking the highest one at five percent, the six thirteen, six fifty six. You already got to one and a quarter figured into the budget.
Right.
So you would, you would take that, uh, one hundred fifty three, four, one, four, and deduct it from that six thirteen.
Four hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred forty two.
All right, four hundred and sixty thousand, yeah. That's what it would actually be. Sixty two.
Two forty two.
Two forty two, yeah. That's what it would actually be. And then, am I correct, Mr. Tedlock?
Well, that would be the percentage, I guess, the additional monies that they would be requesting.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I mean, additional money.
So basically, uh, the way I've got it laid out here, uh, that would be the additional monies needed to cover the, the five percent. I, I didn't include the one point two five percent in that figure that you've got there.
And it, and the six.
Six hundred and thirteen thousand would be over the one point two five percent. Is that right?
No, that, that would include that.
Include it.
Now, if you're looking, and Ms. Booth can correct me if I'm wrong, if you're looking at that one point two million, that one point two million uh, includes that one hundred fifty three thousand four fourteen. Um, and then you would take the difference above the one point two million dollars needed for that five percent. That would be the difference between those two. Do I have any questions on that?
No. All right, any other questions on this budget?
Just clarification, they, what was the, um, additional costs and then VRS like a county had too? Did they, we got those numbers as well?
The VRS, I believe Ms. Booth, um, it calculated those numbers as far as the VRS, uh, increased.
Did, I don't remember what it was.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, let me, I'll take a look.
You probably did, and I got email amnesia. Um, let's see.
We advertised five percent for all county employees. What was the difference between the five percent and the three percent? In other words, how much money are we talking about saving if we did that versus five percent for county employees?
Uh, I would have to go back and, and look, take a look at that. One of the factors in that would be what the board wants to do for, uh, the sheriff's office and EMS, because that was not at a straight uh, five percent, that the percentages in, in those salaries vary, um, to be competitive with the surrounding counties. So, um, I can go back and take a look at what we have on the, just those um, employees that we did the five percent on and do a three percent.
So you're talking to everyone else except for EMS and sheriff's department?
Right. A, and I can run those numbers for the board.
Is it, is it, can you share with the board what we talked about today, but with the five percent now in next year?
Sure. So one of the questions that, um, came up was if the, if the board gave a five percent increase this year and did not do a salary adjustment next year, um, the way the comp board has worked in several of the past, uh, budgets is that you have to provide the employees the percentage increase in order to get the monies back from comp board. So really what we would need to do is if we did a five percent, we would almost have to do a one percent next fiscal year in order to capture that, that increase, that six percent over the biannual budget. So that's what, and you're only going to get three percent of the comp board salaries this year. You're not going to get the full six percent. So there, you're going to get three percent. If we provide the raises, you get three percent this year and three percent next year. And, and that's based off comp board salary. That's not based off of, um, county salary.
What was your thought when you suggested or offered rather five percent this year and nothing next year?
I was looking at the reassessment and also looking at trying to get a year or two focus on other things and salaries. We, we, in my mind, as a board member, we need to start looking at the infrastructure in the county and trying to grow the county, some businesses. We got to look at some office space. We have trying to find that now for the accessories. We've got to, we've got to get focused on that, and we can't keep chasing salaries. I mean, it's very important that we keep a people, and, and I am a hundred percent behind people making a decent wage. I don't want them working for nothing. But it's every year we are focused on salaries, and we're not focused on anything else as far as growing this county. And I was trying to buy a year to
Gotcha.
Focus on that.
All right. Any additional questions, comments?
I guess in a, in a presentation tonight for the public hearing, we'll also see once again the, the total figures of the additional cost countywide for insurance and all the items that actually went up.
Well, and we had the presentation earlier.
Yeah.
Um, with the, the overview, um, and all of that's up for consideration, uh, for tonight's public hearing.
And I guess what I'm looking at is, is a lot was driving this budget this year are the increases that we are facing from the state.
Yeah, we, we do.
And then the insurance.
We, we've got the, the health insurance, we've got the VRS, uh, that's increasing on us. Uh, there, there's several factors there.
Alan, what else do you have? Tedlock, you have anything else you want to comment on, on school budget?
I, I don't know. It was more of just trying to answer any questions the board may have.
I've got one. Um, talking about employee salaries. Where is there a line item in different departments' budgets that would show overtime pay stipends, bonuses? How does that work?
Are you talking about county budget or school budget?
Either.
All right. Uh, as far as the, the county budget, we do have specific line items for each department for, um, overtime, um, and that's, that's listed by department. Uh, really, the only stipend that we have, uh, is tied to EMS, um, and that's laid out in, in their, their budgets, EMS and, um, hazmat.
About school?
School, I'm not sure.
We don't have a specific line for overtime, but we have specific lines for supplemental, so our coaches get supplemental contracts, so that's under supplemental. There is a contracts for secondary school or tutoring or thing, whatever extra thing they have, and that, they do have lines, but they not to there are situations where it's an officer, that it's not a
Do you know how much you're paying overtime in a year's time?
Don't have that number, I can get that.
That's it. What was the total of outside agency requests last year? Do you know? Or who they were? We got what, three, three or four new ones this year, right? Was that your outside agency request?
Maybe three, four, five, something like that. All right, any other questions on the school board budget? What we need to try to focus on, so. We really need to try to focus on it possible.
Just real quick, I guess, on the um, new outside agencies, which the, was, of greater investigation and doing struggle involved with the, the name was there. And then we had increases for the, the other agents. There's, there's ten on the list here, but that doesn't include all of them. Because we do have some, uh, outside agencies that did not request an increase, so that, that's not on that sheet.
This, uh, the local funding increase on the school side, um, that was due to the composite index, what what was the driving force behind that? And I know Ms. Booth covered it, but I just want to.
As far as whether the, the composite index, uh, has changed, uh, every couple of years. So, and, and that's, it's a formula behind that is based off of, um, the, the real estate and it's a various factors that go into that that calculation. Um, and, and ours did increase this year, so it, basically it's a, an amount that it's ability to pay, and a lot of grants and things are based off of that.
All right, what other questions y'all have?
All the other questions I've got, it's got to do with the county side of it, so.
Yeah, we need to have public hearing on that first.
So. I guess I don't want to grant.
You don't want to grant, all right. I still have a question about some numbers that have been brought to my attention. And of funds that are in the school budget. We haven't gotten an answer to them yet, to that question. Are the funds there or are they not? Have not gotten the first answer to that question yet, so I need those, those answers to the, that question. And I'm, I'm not saying anybody is wrong or anybody is right, but we need to clarify.
Have you asked, Ms. Booth? Have you asked her?
Yeah.
We need, we need to make sure.
We need to.
We need to make sure.
I think a few of us need to sit down and go through it. And if you're there, they're there. If they're not, they're not. Let's go with it. Let's, let's see what we do have. I think the sooner we do that, the better.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we need to sit down and do that. With all parties concerned there.
You are correct.
So that we can determine right then and there what's right, what's wrong, what needs to be changed, what doesn't need to be changed. And that way we can hopefully walk out of that meeting with everybody on an even keel, so to speak. Rather than having a meeting with one group of people and they're saying one thing and having a group, a meeting with another group of people and they're saying something else.
I would like, uh, I'd like for the, uh, some of the board, doesn't have to be all of it, probably two members would be more than us. Um, Buck?
Dr. Walco, Ms. Booth? Iker? We sit down and treasure if we can. The good, we sit down and go through this, let's find these numbers, let's see where they come from. And, uh, let's get some answers to it. It will satisfy my mind, so I won't have to keep listening to it when I'm out here in the public. I want an answer to be able to give everybody. I don't want to vote on a budget and then turn around and hear about it when I go back over to the public. I want to be able to make a good decision.
A meeting.
So I think the sooner we can do it, sooner the better.
Yeah, because, uh, you know, with falling, father's going behind the school board, everybody had, but everybody got their the initial contracts, so we, we need to do what we need to do and get it straight. Soon as possible.
What kind of dates do we have? Next week's earliest, I guess. Dr. Walco, Ms. Booth, y'all having an idea in the case, dates? That you, you would be available? Yeah, Monday evening at school board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it need to be in the, maybe during the day?
I, I can't quite hear you, Ms. Booth.
Does it need to be in the evening or can it be during the day?
Anytime you want.
I'll make it work, tell me.
That's, that's what I say. I'll make it work to whatever everybody's schedule is.
Get a budget.
That's what I want to do. I want to get a budget, but I want, I want to satisfy my mind and everybody else's.
We have meetings already on the twelfth and thirteenth next week, which is Wednesday and Thursday. Not that it couldn't be done the same day, but.
Yep.
Why, why not the 10th? Y'all have a meeting when?
The 10th.
What time?
Four o'clock.
I thought that meeting we had the other week. Look, the meeting we had the other week with everybody there. That the numbers were presented. Luttrell was gonna go back and review those numbers and talk to the auditor. And that would, would resolve it, we wouldn't need another meeting.
Hadn't been done yet. Time's wasted. Had two meetings on it of a week.
And I, I just think we're doing a, we're having another meeting, and so we're duplicating them, the same meeting and the same discussions are gonna be had again. And I, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm more than willing to do whatever we need to do to get it done, but I'm just.
We need to get it done.
We do have the, the information, and I think if it's all right, I will get with Ms. Booth. And we will get with the auditor. Give him a call. Actually, the auditors will be here next week. So instead of a phone call, I think the thought was that we could sit down with them and show them the numbers in question. So I think if that's okay with the, the board. I mean, we did say we'd get back with the, the auditor, get additional information.
Well, can we have this done while we can hold on to budget one of those days, we got two meetings to take week, right?
We have one the 12th and the 13th, well, the regular board meeting is on the 13th.
We need to stop dragging our feet while we can go ahead and vote on the budget. So is it possible for you to get everything straight one of those days, while we can?
But do you think it'd be best to, we have to have everybody in the room again with the audit?
That's, that was my question, was it gonna come up, who was gonna be involved in this meeting?
And that way, we, we get it resolved.
Right, well, the, the the auditor is gonna be here to do the preliminaries on fiscal year 24 audit.
Alright, but who is gonna be involved in the meeting itself? That's my question. Only gonna be part of us, no, I want all of us involved in the meeting.
Well, then, I think that's going a little bit. I would need to check with the auditor if he's comfortable sitting in with a meeting with with everyone.
We gotta get an answer, I want.
Cause I mean, I don't want to blindside the auditor.
No, I don't want to blindside RD, if you can ask the auditor. But the auditor's there, answer the questions that we need. If the auditor can't answer our questions, we need to get another auditor. Simple as that.
Well, the comments that they're giving you forward, they keep referring you back to the one page. Correct of the audit?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, then that one page indicates that it was money left over. But I, I would assume you want more clarification than just pointing to a, a page in a book.
And it's to get further clarification on the specific numbers that were spoken about in that meeting, is what we're trying to get further clarification on.
And you also got a superintendent's report down there that says one thing. That's supposed to be right. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying Dr. Walgill made a mistake, no, I, I believe her figures.
I just think.
We have to get it clarified, if we don't get it clarified, I can't vote for a budget.
Well, what, what do you say, Mr. Tadlock, that you don't need the whole board to be at this meeting, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think you know, I, I don't want to blindside the auditor and say, call a meeting and then have everybody show up for, for a meeting.
Would, would he be blindsided if he knew in advance that we went on?
Well, that's what I'm, I need to talk to him and before they get here next week, is what I'm.
Well, we need to get that done.
Yeah, we need to.
We need to get it done, need to get the ball rolling, not just dragging our feet. We need an answer.
Well, we can go.
He needs to know that it's gonna be a certain few coming. We're gonna sit down and discuss it and get the answers.
I'll, I'll reach out to him.
And I don't want to leave until we get answers, everybody satisfied. Get the answers, I'm ready for a budget.
We need to pass this budget the 12th or the 13th. And if it means that let's say only two board members need to be present, so move it, I mean, but we need to find out. Get it done.
With both?
Sounds good to me.
I would love to hope that we could get it done next week. You know, there's a lot of stress and extra work caused at this point last year when the budget wasn't approved until last week, June. We had to come in over the weekend because we had to change our health insurance information in our system three separate times. We didn't have a budget, so we couldn't change what the county's share was. So we had to change it the first time, then we got a budget. And we had to change it a second time. And then we had to change it a third time because the second time had to reimburse them for what they'd overpaid the first time when we didn't have the budget. It makes a lot of extra work for us and whatever, we don't know by the end of next week, we have June payroll, so we're gonna end up doing the same thing all over again. It's hours and hours of work.
That's not my goal to drag our feet. I want an answer next week.
Thank you.
That's what I want, I want to get this resolved. The week, the week can give you a budget.
That would be wonderful, you tell me where I need to be and when, and I will make it happen.
Alright. Dr. Pike. School board. Oh, not the school board, but Dr. Walgill, Ms. Booth.
Monday afternoon.
I'll make it work, I got class Monday, but I will make changes, I can do that. Yeah. I'll make changes, make anything work.
Luttrell's gonna talk to the auditor, he just send the date, the time, and we make it work.
Yep, right. Send him an email.
That's the best, best way to do it, I mean, it's always just that him, plan a meeting.
We have to keep in mind.
Wait on the audit.
We have to keep in mind that the auditor might not want the whole board now.
Just go ahead and two boards.
Two board members. Two board members, it might not even want that, but Luttrell. He'll let us know.
Sure.
Alright, let's see if we can get that set up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you all for trying to work with us. Alright. What else do we have?
I think that's about it, so we can get, get that.
If we don't have anything else, we can we can have a recess until our seven o'clock meeting, or should we adjourn and reopen again?
Adjourn and reopen again, if I be best.
Alright, so what you suggested, Mr. Tadlock?
You, you can do it, alright.
I have a motion to carry over till.
Till adjourned, right?
Should we adjourn or should we just carry over? We're kinda halfway between both.
I bet we do a motion to carry over until seven o'clock for the public hearing.
I think that would be better if we just carry over.
That's a motion, that's fine.
Alright, we got a motion, got a second. Alright, all those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we will be back at 7:00 PM tonight for the public hearing on the county budget. Thank everybody for coming now and see y'all at seven. Gentlemen, I call this meeting to order today and welcome everybody here for our June 6, 2024, seven o'clock meeting. And it's a public hearing on the county budget. So, welcome everybody here. First item would be the county budget. Tedlock?
Yes, sir. Tonight is the public hearing for the fiscal year 25 budget, which totals $50 million, $513,252, excuse me. This does reflect a, an eight cent increase in the current real estate tax rate. And there will be no action taken by the Board of Supervisors, as there is a seven day waiting period required by the Code of Virginia.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Tadlock, any board members have any comments at all for the public hearing? No comments, alright. I'll open the public hearing. The first person I have on the sign up sheet tonight is Ken Fiker. Come on up, man.
This one's too tall for me, alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for holding this hearing, my name is Karen Pika, I live over in Heathsville in, on Stillwater Drive. I rise to express my concern with a 13% tax increase that would be necessary to fund this budget in full. Having taken a look at the budget, and in particular, the school board budget, I think there are some judicious cuts in expenses that can be made, and I really appreciate the board's due diligence in asking some more questions. I understand that next week there will be more work sessions and more meetings. So for example, with the school budget, one of the, the pieces of information that's floating around is that the budget needs to be raised because of the LCI. So let's take a deep dive into those data. The local composite index based on the budget for 2022. The school budgeted $3.7 million from the state with the existing LCI. The budget for 2025 is anticipating $3.5 million from the state. Even though our LCI is going up. That is a difference of $200,000, not 1.7 million. Add in the money that's necessary to support the hardworking teachers. Give them raises, make sure they have health insurance, another 300,000. That would mean the school budget would need to, at a minimum, increase maybe by 500,000. Lucky for us, the state just gave us 568,000. Which means, based on a change in LCI, the school needs no more money to fully fund teacher raises and insurance. So it's not an LCI issue, it's an expense issue, and we really need to get a control of the expenses. The library needs to have, where's June? The library needs to have their money brought up to a level where they can get adjustments and state, other state revenue. So for example, the school, this county is super generous when it comes to funding for the school, the required minimum for the school is around seven and a half million dollars per the state formula. This county continually funds between 13 and 15 million, which demonstrates the value that this board places on the education of our students and the value of the employees of the school. So cutting a budget because expenses are getting out of control does in no way diminish the value we place on education. Surplus, we've talked about this in the past. There's been anywhere, depending on which number you look at, let's just look at the 2023 numbers. The county audit report showed a $903,000 surplus. The school answers to the school, to this board's question showed a $648,000 surplus. The superintendent's report that is provided to the state superintendent per code, the Code of Virginia 22.1-81 shows a $1.6 million surplus for FY23. No one disagrees there was surplus, which is great, public institutions can't run surpluses. So if we've got extra money in the schools, let's place it elsewhere in the county to make sure that we're spreading around the resources that are needed, it's a small community. There's a lot of people here that can't afford a 13% tax increase this year, and then what happens again next year? No county resident needs to spend another penny until we get a better idea of what these expenses are and understand fully what is needed in a budget, not what is desired, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, next person is Suzanne Smart.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Smart, I reside in Heathsville. So some, some question that that we might ask would be, why, why do we need a tax increase? So I have a few different answers here that we might hear to that question, and the first answer being that we need to fully fund our schools, and we need to fully fund all of the departments here in the county. The budget that's been presented, it is my understanding that that budget gives every want to every department here in the county. That, to me, that is unrealistic. The question I would ask you is, do you run your household giving every single want that you have to your wife, to your kids, to the expenditures that you want to make? I think it would be irresponsible to do that on a household level, and as such, it's irresponsible to do it at the county level. Additionally, it would be irresponsible to expect the taxpayers to provide for all of those wants that the schools and other departments are asking for. Particularly if those households cannot provide for the needs that they have in their homes. We've all seen all costs go up, gas, food, housing, everything. The other answer that you might hear to the question, why do we need to pass a tax increase, would be that the county needs to increase its revenue. A tax increase may not necessarily increase revenue for the county. There will be fewer businesses that will be likely to come to the county. I've seen businesses approach and want to come, and, and the board has denied several of those requests. It seems as though fewer businesses would want to come if taxes are increased. People move and do not come to the area. And others simply cannot pay their taxes, or they pay late because of the increases. That would result in the county needing to hire some sort of firm to begin a collections process, which is gonna increase costs to the county. I have an example from our HOA. The neighborhood that my husband and I reside in, we had a 20% HOA increase on January 1st of 2021. We had another 20% HOA due increase in January of 2024. We saw in, in 2021, a handful, just a few people didn't pay on time. Fast forward to 20, to 2024, we were up to around 20 homes that did not pay on time, so. An increase in taxes is not necessarily going to mean a 13% increase in your revenue here in the county, that, that just is, is simply not gonna be the case. Additionally, you'll see a snowball effect with that, which would, the, the county would then seem as though it needs to increase taxes yet again because the revenues are not going up, it's like you're stuck in a do loop, right? The other comment that we hear is, well, I'll pay it, I'll pay the increase in taxes. I will gladly pay that increase. Uh, I will gladly pay that increase. And the folks who say that, what they really mean is they want you to pay the increase, each one of you on the board to pay an increase in taxes, me to pay an increase in taxes, our teachers, those who are working for the sheriff's department, our small business owners, the crabbers, the fishermen, the oystermen. They want everybody else to pay the increase in taxes. Um, and I would challenge anyone who is here tonight who would like to see that to bring their checkbook. They can come up. They could happily write the county. I don't know if the treasurer is here, but I'm sure the treasurer would gladly accept a check made out to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anyone else on the sign up sheet tonight. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, sir.
My name is James Penny. I live over in the Typer's area. Last year, to meet the school board's wants, county departments had to reduce their budgets. I'm not preaching to the choir. I'm just making a statement. That's what happened. This year, the school budget again is needed. For eleven hundred and thirty some odd students, seventy-five don't even live in the county. The school budget needs a cut, gentlemen. The county cannot afford to continue on this path of continually funding their desired wants. I ask that the Board of Supervisors fully fund the county budget in all categories but one. The school budget must be cut and reduced to thirteen percent, point oh percent, or point oh eight cent proposed budgeted tax rate. Got to come down on that thirteen percent. The county operations budget serves all of the county's residents, everybody in this room, everybody in the county. The school board budget serves eleven hundred and thirty minus seventy, which the seventy are not even seventy, seventy-five, somewhere in that range, are not even county residents. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak?
I wasn't going to do this. I swear. Um, name's Maurice Johnson. And as I said a few weeks ago, it seems like every year, we are in fact stuck in the do loop that Suzanne was just talking about. Every year, we get hit with the, the risk of increased taxes. I almost said threat. We get hit with, actually, we witness a situation where in spite of all the complaints coming from this side of the partition, nothing ends up coming of it. Um, and I can't tell you how frustrating that is from this side of the partition. Um, as has been pointed out, we have a situation where all of the resources are not going where they need to be. We do need to spend money on building business in this community. Right now, we're struggling to figure out where those resources are going to come from, how we're going to change things, the way we do business in order to attract new businesses, create new jobs. Oh, wait a second. We need people to work those jobs, and we're not getting what we pay for over there. So we have a problem here, and we can't continue to do things the way we've always done them and expect things to change. That's the definition of insanity. So we have to change something, and somebody needs to make a hard decision. And I'm sorry if it's going to be unpopular, but it needs to be made. I know it's going to be tough. Don't envy your position one bit, but it needs to happen because we're in a death row. We're, we don't have jobs to offer. The people are leaving. The ones that are going to get hit with these real estate taxes, the ones that can least afford it, they're going to go somewhere else. And again, those are the people that are working class people. So we're going to lose workforce over this. And we're not going to get replacements coming out of the education system. Because the ones that would qualify as being workers coming out of the education system, they're going to move on and go to university somewhere. And they're going to get a job, and they're not going to come back. And the ones that can't, well, I know a few employers around here that wish that they could. So we've got much to consider when we look at what this budget's got going on. It's not just about the schools. There's a great deal of need in this county that needs attention economically and otherwise. Yes, I know you guys have a hard decision to make. And I know that some folks might think that there's not support for being tight. Well, I'm telling you, on this side of the partition, there's plenty of support. So I don't know where the support deficiency is, but it's not coming from this side of the partition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, do we have anybody in the virtual world tonight that would like to speak, or anybody online?
I would like to speak.
All right. Come on, ma'am. State your name and all.
Good evening, board. My name is Laura McMillan, and I own my home in Reedville. It's a secondary home for our family. And I am extremely concerned with the increase in real estate taxes, and, and my concern is for the small businesses. My family comes to Reedville to spend time together, go on dinner that we don't normally go to, ice cream shops, and we're not going to be able to do that with a thirteen percent increase because you go to Horn Harbor for our family of five, it's two hundred and thirty dollars. Cheddar tax is twenty-five dollars, and I like to take them every single time I'm here. Um, so I am saddened that you guys would consider this increase, and I am, I do not support it at all. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, would anyone else online like to speak tonight? Would anyone else that's online like to speak tonight? Nobody else? All right. All right, since we don't have anyone else that wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Now, we have to wait, uh, seven days in it before we can make a decision. So ladies and gentlemen, we will not be making a decision on the budget tonight until after seven days from the public hearing. Um, I have no other open meeting discussion tonight. Uh, we will need to go into a closed meeting here. Unless board members have some comments they want to make before we go into closed meeting.
I think citizens need to know also that some of what's increasing the budget this year is, is not in our control. Um, a lot of the retirement has gone up and health insurance has gone up. And it's a few other things that's, that's going up in the budget. We do have to, uh, sit down and make some hard decisions. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to vote for the budget as, as it's being presented. I might as well put that out there now. Um, we've got some decisions to make in the next few days, and I'm going to look at it with the numbers and facts and not with the emotions in it and see what we can do. And let's come up with a budget.
All right. You have a, board members want to comment? But there are, there are a lot of increases we have in the budget.
And we control them with some of them.
Yep, no control. Everything's gone up. We have a lot of things to look at, and we're going to try to do our best to keep the tax rate as low as possible and, uh, and still provide services to the county. Any other comments from the, uh, board? If not, I will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting. Unless you have something else.
No, I, I don't have any items for closed meeting unless the board did.
All right, if we don't have anything, we, we don't need to go into it.
No, I, I don't have any.
All right, I'm just looking at what you had on.
I think that was the closing of the meeting.
Closing of the meeting. I read it wrong.
That's all right.
I'm just so used to skimming at it. All right. Carry over.
No, not unless, I'm sorry, not unless, did you want to address that other, uh, matter from the Santeras District?
Yes, let's go ahead and address that. Thank you.
Um, so I sent late this afternoon, this evening to the board, um, some information from David Willard. And, uh, they have noticed some, uh, bowling in Cockles Creek in the area of the outfall pipe. Um, I believe some of that is due to, uh, the changes made at the, the plant, um, which has increased, uh, the pump sizes and, and various things that may be causing some of those issues. But just to double check that, um, we've, he has gotten a quote for uh, Crofton to dive on site just to verify that. Again, this is the dive site. This is, or the, um, outfall site. This is not the location of the ruptured pipe that we had earlier this year. So they're two separate locations. Um, but we did receive a quote of six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars if the board wishes to move forward with that.
All right, have any discussions on the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I spoke with Mr. Willard between our two meetings. He is, he is thinking that the quote that we got from Crofton is high. Um, when they did emergency dives on the previous project in Reedville, it was significantly less than this amount. And this does not require hazmat suits because of what they're involved with. He would like to go back to them tomorrow and see if they sharpen their pencil a little bit, so to speak.
Do we know if this is just basic air or is it gas coming out? Type of methane gas or something?
He thinks it's air. He's also not sure what is supposed to be down there at the end of this pipe where the fluid is being released because he doesn't have, um, an accurate diagram. Uh, the system is fifty plus years old. Is that right?
So this is what a clean water is being released.
Correct.
So it's not contaminated. It's clean water. You just want to make sure that it's being released properly.
He's thinking that what is supposed to be down there could diffuse the fluid so it wouldn't be as visible to the public as it is now.
All right, so let's wait and see what, what price adjustment we can get. That's all right, rest of the board, all right? Anything else, yeah?
That, that's it.
Any board members have anything else? That point, Jerry, Reggie, now we've been getting a few letters on that. We've got a few today on to it, so. Uh, people are getting very anxious trying to get that dredged, Dave.
Yeah, we, we are trying to get a normal meeting with Army Corps of Engineers, uh, to get an update from them as well. Um, the funding that was presented to the Virginia Port Authority uh, for the, for Cockles Creek and for the Little Wakanco uh, was approved, uh, by the Virginia Port Authority for the third phase. And that's to do, uh, engineering studies and, uh, to move forward with a lot of the, uh, paperwork that needs to be done prior to the actual dredging. Um, that does not, uh, that, that funding does not contain anything in it as far as to do the actual dredging. So that's something that we need to go back to the Army Corps, uh, to figure out some of those logistics.
What was in Cockles Creek? You said Little River and Cockles Creek?
Uh, Cranes, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, Cranes Creek and, and Little, sorry, we were just talking about Cockles Creek, so.
Yeah, do you have, have you been to the Jetties or, or Chip, you've been through it? How much water's in there right now?
Um, I know commercial guys that go in and out of there daily that don't have any trouble, but they are very familiar with how the channel has changed. Um, somebody that went in there once a year could easily have trouble.
You're not going to see too many sailboats going in that.
I don't think you'll see any sailboats.
It's that one hump about two hundred and fifty feet inside the mouth.
Right.
It's the worst.
Inside.
Inside.
Yeah.
After that, you got just as much water in the channel as you got in the whole, in the whole creek.
When that was dredged in two thousand twenty-fourteen, did they pump whatever they were dredging, um, around the corner on the beach?
To the, round where the old entrance used to be.
All right. Any timeline on progress on this with, with Army Corps?
I don't, I don't know. At this point, we are trying to, uh, like I said, get, get a normal meeting with them.
Only thing I know, I'm just, you know, I've had a lot of letters and comments on to, phone calls and all on to it. Uh, we're trying to get it opened up. I don't know if, uh, asking Rob Whitman to help or not, would, would help or not. Do not know. Yeah, I know. I know you can only push things so fast. That's why I was asking how much water was in there because I haven't, I haven't been in there for a little while, so I do not know. All right, have anything else, gentlemen? If not, we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to carry over to June the twelfth at, uh, time is that?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Make a motion, we carry over June twelfth.
Five thirty. Second.
Got a motion in second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight.